Good morning. It is Monday, August 19th. Lake County Schools Board Workshop. If we can start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are going to jump right in. I don't have any public input cards, so we're going to jump right down to item 3.01. Internal audit discussion. Mr. Scott Ward.
Good morning, good morning. I just wanted to introduce you real quick to Ava and to Claire. They're with RSM. I invited them to come in this morning. They're internal auditors. They're going to talk about their firm, a little bit about themselves. Y'all can come sit up here. The remote's right there in the center. And talk about their firm, answer any questions that you guys might have about how an internal audit firm would work with the district. And then you guys can have some conversation with me.
Thank you.
Good deal. Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, thank you for having us. We'll just go real quick, who's here today? So I'm Clara Ewing. I'm a managing director with RSM. I lead our internal audit services that we provide to our public sector entities. So I spend 100% of my time focused on school districts, counties, and cities. RSM, our public sector consulting, internal audit practice, we actually got our start here in Florida. I remember sitting right here over 15 years ago, because we did some work for Lake back in the day as well. It was one of the first school districts that I had worked on myself doing internal audit work. I also have one of my managers that works on some of our Florida school districts, Ava Dorasami. So she spends 100% of her time as well doing internal audit for public sector entities. This is what we do day in and day out. We're auditors in our past lives, financial statement auditors in our past lives, but internal audit is what we have focused on, and this is what I've been doing for the past 15 years. So just talking to you a little bit about, next slide's kind of talk about RSM, who we are. We are the fifth largest professional accounting firm. We have seven offices here in Florida. Again, public sector is one of our major focus industries that we focus on, especially here in the state of Florida. Again, we got our start here, and we've kind of like spread out through the southeast. And now I kind of look at all of us nationally. We're doing work for Boston Public Schools. We're doing work for Houston Independent School Districts. But our core is still Florida, because this is where we got our start. This is where we're at the FSFOA, we're at FADs, we're at FGFOA, we're at these various conferences, you know, with your individuals who are learning what they're learning. We're providing courses, we're teaching, we're seeing what's out in the industry. We have a team of professionals throughout the state of Florida and throughout the state of the southeast. This is all of their focus. You know, some of the other firms they may cross with their external audit and consulting and internal audit, but for here, our focus is, and our methodology is, our team, this is what we do 100% of the time. So we're not crossing, I'm a CIA, Ava's a CIA, we have CPAs on our team, we have CFEs, we have CISA's, we have PCI individuals. So we have a very vast variety of certifications that we bring to the table as that fifth largest firm and the focus on school districts. It's our passion. We're not gotcha auditors. That's not fun for us. It's all about providing that value. You know, what we see in school districts and counties and cities, these individuals are wearing various hats, and we understand that. You all have limited resources, limited funding, limited people. So we try to make sure that when we're executing our internal audits, it's really focusing on what is going to work best for you all. People, process, and technology, right? What do you currently have in place? What works best for you? Because we're not going to do canned recommendations that are kind of pie in the sky that you're never going to get to. What have we seen elsewhere for school districts of your size? Because we've had the benefit now working with a variety of school districts with a variety of sizes and variety of situations. So we can kind of bring to the table what has worked best. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, right? But it's a matter of how are we interacting and really getting to know the school district that we're working with? Because every school district is different. Yes, we say we know Florida school districts. Each one of them are so different in their environment, their constituency, the public, the people that they have, and just the dynamics. So we try to make sure that we're understanding that along the way as well. Hopefully, you're kind of understanding, this is a passion of ours. I wake up every morning and I love what I do. I love doing this. I love doing audits. Who would have thought that internal audit could be fun, right? But it is. It is. We get satisfaction out of what we do. So here are just some of our school districts. Again, like I said, I sat at this table over 15 years ago. I was much younger in my profession, but I remember sitting here. We do, currently, we are the outsourced internal auditors for seven Florida school districts, satisfying that Florida statute, right, that a lot of school districts are now under. So there's seven that we do outsourced internal audit services, and it satisfies the statute. We have a few school districts where they have a function, so we do co-source with them. Again, as the fifth largest, we're able to bring in a variety of subject matter professionals like construction, security and privacy, technology. So we have all these team members that supplement this core team who understands processes. So these are just some of the school districts that we have worked with throughout the years and some of the work that we have done with them. Again, the Florida statute and how we have been able to satisfy that statute since the inception. So I'm going to turn it over to Ava. Ava's going to talk to you just high level about our internal audit process that we follow.
Perfect. I mean, we're very close to each other, but you guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. So Clara mentioned she loves auditing, if there was ever such a thing. This is definitely what our process looks like. Happy to walk you through it, but at a high level, we always start with a risk assessment. This is kind of the formal risk assessment, although you could say a risk assessment happens throughout the entire process because we want to make sure we're agile. Something pops up, we want to make sure we're addressing it, we can identify it, we can assess it, and make any adjustments that we need to. But there is kind of that starting risk assessment process. As part of this process, we talk to senior leadership, we talk to the board, the superintendent, and we make sure we get different perspectives of risk throughout the district. Everyone will have a different perception depending on where they sit, what it is that they're focusing on, and that's good. That's our goal. We want to make sure we understand what's top of mind. One of the questions we always ask in this process is what keeps you up at night? And we truly just want to say, no. What are the things that you're worried about or maybe not worried about, but you just are not sure how that works? And it would be a good idea to have internal audit take a look and make sure we, it is working the way that it's supposed to. So we kind of catalog our risks, identify them, assess them, and that's what will help develop the internal audit plan for the year. The execution of the internal audit plan, we kind of break that out into two different categories. There is design and operating effectiveness. So we always want to make sure, regardless of how things are operating, we want to assess that. But what is the design or the controls in place? Maybe they're not formalized, maybe they're not written down, but are they in essence operating and designed appropriately to make sure all of the risks are mitigated as best we can? Then, like I mentioned, we'll look at operating effectiveness. So let's say the design looks good, the controls are in place, are they working the way we expect them to be working? So that any potential risk of an issue happening, maybe it's a risk because there's significant growth, it's not necessarily tied to a bad thing, but whatever risks there are in the environment, we're able to assess and see is that control working the way that we hope that it is. After we kind of go through that testing process, the vetting stage, we separate that out into its own category. Because as you know, anything that's written from your internal audit function and publishes a report is a public document. Before we get there, we spend a significant amount of time working with the team, working with stakeholders, with process owners, to make sure that any potential exception, as we'll call it, is thoroughly vetted. It's very possible that the internal auditor may come in, take a look at a process, and something that we think is an exception really isn't. Maybe we just didn't have the full nuance of it. We want to make sure we fully flush that out and we're on the same page with management before we even get into reporting. In the reporting phase, you'll have typically our observation what the issue was, our recommendation, and then a management action plan. That's kind of another layer where we work with management and say, okay, what is your plan for remediating this risk? What's your estimated completion date? Who is responsible for remediating that risk? So this whole process, we're working hand in hand. We want to integrate ourselves with the team and make sure that we're all on the same page as what the risk is, and we're all on the same page as what our steps moving forward are. Ultimately, we report these observations and recommendations, of course, to the board. And then there's a follow-up process. So it's very cyclical. We want to make sure if we have a recommendation and an observation, it doesn't just get issued and then sit out there. That's not really doing anybody any good. We want to make sure we're following up. Our mature internal audit functions, we have kind of a cyclical follow-up process. So if we do have an observation, we wait for that recommendation to be implemented, and then we close the loop. Has this actually been remediated the way we hope it is? We can cross it off the list and move forward from there. So it's a very ongoing process, and as part of that, we want to make sure we're working with the team. I think the next slide talks a little bit more about that. But auditing, being audited, we know that the management team has got their own job going on. Audit is our job. We want to make sure we are doing what we need to do to address a district's risks, and we're not getting in the way of management more than we need to. Of course, we need documents, we need to be able to assess a process, but working day in, day out, as Clara mentioned, with these different teams, we totally understand there's a such thing as audit fatigue. So we want to make sure we're there, we're with the team, we're integrated, we're getting documents in the least invasive way possible, in that we're talking about risk not just coming at the district, but that everyone understands risk and controls is everybody's business. So we want to be as least invasive as possible, but also working with the team to make sure risk and risk management is top of mind for anybody doing their day-to-day job. Anything I missed there?
You know, just making sure that we're getting across, it's very important for an internal audit function not to work in a silo, because there's too many assumptions that can be made that may not be correct. So when you're working in that silo and you're making those assumptions without really fully vetting and talking with your stakeholders, you could lose part of the process. And that we find the most effective internal audit function and the most effective way to be able to provide the value in what we're doing is getting that stakeholder involvement and making them part of the process. It's very key, and we just seen just big success from that avenue and that lens.
Yep.
And what we're also able to do is, depending on what topic it is that we're seeing, we'll bring, we'll supplement our team, whether it's for technology, whether it's, we'll bring in data analytics, our data analytics team based off, is it accounts payable that we're looking at? Are we looking at P cards? Are we looking at some timesheets? We'll bring in our data analytics team, because they can really just take that data and just do so much with it these days. And these different tools and everything that they have, it really provides a benefit before we're even able to execute. So we can really analyze the data first to tell the story and then kind of go from there. Again, it depends on what we're looking at. Again, we have security and privacy resources that we bring to the table, because that's, we always say, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, especially when it comes to cybersecurity. So they stay on the forefront, and they're focused on our public sector practice. We have a distinct security and privacy public sector practice that is focused on those threats and what our public sector entities go through. Just some very, very high level, this is not an all-inclusive listing at all. We have one school district that we've been their internal auditors for over 25 years, and the list of topics that we looked at is multiple pages, right? So this is just some high-level topics that it is that we look at, especially with our Florida school districts, whether it's FTE, timekeeping, grant, student discipline, charter schools, budget, et cetera, just going across that list from just an internal audit perspective. And then when you're looking at IT and security, some of that can be cybersecurity assessment, IT general controls, change management, social engineering, data governance, data protection. And then there's those special projects that come up. Some of our school districts, we're aligned with the board attorneys when it comes to fraud, wasted abuse. If they get tips or notifications, they bring us in to kind of help them as they're navigating through various things. So internal audit can be used in a variety of aspects for a variety of topics as well. And just our last slide here, just talking about internal audit considerations. A fully functioning internal audit function has various aspects when it comes to that risk assessment, the follow-up procedures, and really having that quality control. You all live in the public sector. Everything that you do is out there, transparent. You know, there are some confidential reports, you know, according to Florida Sunshine. So we're well-versed in that, but every word of these reports is very key before it gets to that final stage. And that's, we take this very seriously and is very important. So within our public sector internal audit team, we have even more stringent processes when it comes to vetting the reports. We have multiple teams reading multiple reports, really checking every word, and even down to the stakeholders, vetting it with the stakeholders, vetting it with management, et cetera, before it is finalized. Because we don't want something in a report that's wrong. So I know this is kind of fast and high level, but we just wanted to be cognizant of your time as well. So we're open for any questions that you may have.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Mr. Mathias?
And some of this is going to be with Scott Ward. Where did he go to? Back of the room. So with the, as you know, that we had our internal auditor retired, and so there are volumes of work that he had done that give you some empirical, to your point, going back and looking to see audits he had already completed. Would you be looking at those or are you doing, is this starting fresh?
Our preference would be to start fresh. Let's say we pick, I'm going to use timekeeping as a topic. Let's say we all decide we should do timekeeping as an audit. We'll ask and we'll look at old reports to see if anything's been issued about timekeeping so we can get up to date, but we like to maybe draw a line in that sand and start fresh. But we will always look to see if there's other issued reports as well to kind of see if we can start getting that understanding and maybe what some of those findings were previously.
I'm assuming, Scott, they're going to be coordinating directly with you?
That's up to the board, however the board wants to structure it. If they want me to coordinate with them directly, that's fine. Whenever they do the risk assessments and stuff like that, you guys will be involved in that, and y'all will develop that together. And then once you've kind of got a path of direction, then, you know, as far as the logistics of issuing contracts and signing POs and stuff like that, I can handle all that.
The one thing you covered was a question of mine. The outside, all of the outside audits that we typically do during the year, they now will take care of all those.
No. No, they'll just do the internals. They will not do the, they'll not do the annual financial report. That's still with.
No, I meant just the ones like technology. We hired that out.
Like, yeah. Construction closeout, whatever else.
Construction, yes, all of that.
That all now will come under.
It can, yes, absolutely. Whatever you guys decide.
Is there one liaison that is with the district so that there's?
Yes. So first I'll describe our side. So on the RSM side, you're going to have your core team. I will be your, if you choose RSM, I would be your relationship leader. Ava would be your project manager. So we're your familiar faces that the district is going to see day in and day out. And we'll, depending on the topic, we'll bring in those other resources within our firm. But we are your core team from that avenue and that perspective. Typically with our, on the district side, we typically have a liaison, whether it's a CFO, et cetera, but we do typically have a liaison that we work with at the school districts to help, kind of help us get the lay of the land.
And once you finish your first draft, does it come back to you, Scott, to answer, so that it's cleaned up, the part about there may be a reason?
Sure. That would be, if I was to be the liaison, yes, I would be the first.
So I'll give you one of our examples right now. So we go, we execute our project. We are vetting it with our stakeholders first, again, back to timekeeping, whether we're working with maybe someone in the finance department that's over the timekeepers. So we're vetting it with them, the process owner, control owners. Then we kind of go to that next level of management, maybe it's Scott. Scott's that next level. Then we go to that next level, the superintendent. We want to make sure that all eyes are on it before it gets finalized in those final words to make sure there's accuracy within it.
And then it goes to?
The board. Yeah.
Do you all come present that to us?
Whatever your preference is. We have some school districts where we do have an audit committee that we present to, and then we do a higher level report out to the board. Or we have some school districts where we just report directly to the board as well with that report out.
And so, so the tenure with Lake County School, the work you had did was nine to 11? Is that what it is?
Yeah, I think it was, we did a few projects, and I believe we did internal accounts. My memory has gotten.
I came on the board at the end of 11. What happened? Because I know we ended up on our own internal.
Yeah, you had your own internal auditors.
Was that a decision of the board at that time?
I need to ask my partner. She was more involved then. I was, I came in for projects here and there, so I need to ask her more then with that history. But it was a shift in the board, shift in superintendent. You had a lot of, I remember you had a lot of leadership change during that time as well, and you had an internal auditor that came on board.
That's all you had. Mr. Dug?
Right. Yeah, so I'd be interested in taking a look at some of the sample, examples of your work. It looks like you've got a number of school districts that you currently work with. Are those reports published on those school websites, do you know?
They do not publish them, but we can get you copies because they are final.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just love to take a look at a couple of exemplars. You know, I think sometimes, before I came to the board, I think there were some cases of maybe internal audit or something hired out where you, I think the criticism from the taxpayers here was, you spent $25,000 and got this two-page, you know, thing. And I guess I'm just looking for that, what does that depth look like?
Absolutely. We cannot share any IT or.
Understood.
Penetration testing reports, but other than that, we can share those.
Yeah, something that would obviously not be security sensitive. I'd love to take a look at that. And so as you are conducting your audits, are you also looking at general efficiencies of how to smooth things out or make it a more efficient process? Maybe something doesn't violate any sort of compliance or statutory or regulatory, you know, but just, obviously, we're not funded that great, right? So every dollar counts, and if we can identify improvements in processes or becoming more efficient as a district, then that obviously shifts more money to how we'd want to spend it, right? So I'm wondering if that's part of your look as well.
Absolutely, because we take it from a kind of a twofold. A lot of our school districts antiquated systems, right? Limited resources that we talked about. So we want to make sure that we don't see redundancy in controls, you know. This team over here seems to be doing something that could kind of relate to here, you know, are we being efficient with what we're doing? And also use of the system. Yes, the systems are antiquated, but there's still work that can be done to some of these systems to help drive that efficiency, help drive those preventive controls, and maybe take a little bit less, not a lot, but maybe a little bit less off the plates of some of the control orders as well and how they're looking at things.
And my other wondering, and I don't know if this is a question for you or just something for the board to think about, is what our plan would be when these random pop-up things happen? You know, we get a random call to the booster, about a booster club potentially misusing funds. Is this something that we would look at internally? We'd have somebody from our staff do that, or would we, because that previously would have been Tom Mock, but would we hire them to do this?
So we have our two ladies that are senior accountants that help the boosters organizations and the bookkeepers at the school level. So if it's something that they can address, then obviously we can reprioritize them immediately and put them on that.
Okay.
If it's something that's easily answered and can move on, then if not, if it does take something more thorough, then it would be up to the board to determine where they want to have them come in and do a more thorough audit.
Okay. So you've got some resources to take an initial pass at it, and then we can decide if, what depth we're looking at. And I guess that's just, and I guess it seems that all the call, random calls to the hotline would fall under that too.
Sure.
Something we can investigate internally, then.
We'll probably add another person to fill, so it's not just the Director of Finance and the CFO. We'll probably add some other person so that there's at least, if there is something regarding finance, there's an outside objective person who can weigh in on that.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Dr. Luke?
My questions were, and you may want to say there, Mr. Ward, because this might be a, I don't know. So like, I guess my first question would be like, what's the amount of audits that we would anticipate after the risk assessment, and it might be associated with my next question, which was the cost associated with the services.
So, yeah, Scott, I, we spoke a little about this. He was asking with our other school districts, what does our funding look like, right? Because it's all about the budget allocation. Can't do everything. So one of, some of our comparable school districts to Lake, our funding is around, I want to say 170 to 200,000, and we're able to do about three to four projects within that budget, depending on what the projects are.
That would include like the IT audit in one of those projects?
If that's one of the topics, yes.
And then, okay.
I think the difference is compared to what we've been used to in the past is it would probably be three or four very in-depth projects compared to seven or eight lightly scratching the surface projects.
But I also hear that instead of contracting out to do some of the bigger audits, this firm would be taking care of those audits. So how much room do you think there would be for anything that the board did find important on the risk assessment? Because obviously IT is going to be important every year, so our security and our controls and those types of things that we do every year. So I just.
And we have a construction project every year.
We have a construction project every year, if not more. So I just don't know, does that mean we get one audit a year with the three to four with that $175,000 to $200,000?
I would think the construction audits would stay the same, because that was kind of above and beyond the cost of Tom and his department, or just one person.
We were hiring that out anyway.
We were hiring that anyway. So I don't think it'd be additional on that. So I think we could still handle doing the construction audits, and it wouldn't interfere with the risk assessment for the other items.
I think this is really where it's just beneficial to see what an example of one of these deeper dive audits look like. Because we're used to the scratch-the-surface approach, you know, we audit a whole bunch of areas.
Right.
But, you know, there's probably some value.
Actually, to Mr. Dodge's point, when you find that one that you want to give us, I'd be very interested, because one of my concerns always was going back and seeing if the audit actually proved the value or the savings. So if you had one where you did the audit and then came back, you said you'd come back and do a, close the loop?
We do follow up to make sure that the risks have been mitigated, but to, we don't determine the return on the investment. It's just, it's too hard from a, you can't put a price on having sound controls in place. So I don't think we'll be able to answer that question for you, but we can find the reports where they have mitigated, mitigated the risk and the controls around the process.
And are they looking at any procedures then?
I think, I think what she's, to kind of equate what she was trying to say, a lot of times you hear about the, you know, the avoided costs and stuff like that, that's just kind of made up or industry standard. So, you know, what they're, what she's saying is, is, you know, you don't know what the outcome changed, but it did cause improvements. So, you know, you don't know what cost you could have avoided.
So I guess to add, to build on that, we would want some pretty clear objectives so that we could determine if there was a return on investment, even if it wasn't monetary.
Sure.
And I feel like we can do better with that as well. I mean, that wasn't, I think that's a whole, as a group, we could do better about that. Because I agree, I feel like we wouldn't want to outsource this school small audit set where we've got $10,000 that we're questioning for 25, you know? So just to make sure that we have those covered. But otherwise, I will say that I heard in our last discussion when we were looking at hiring an internal auditor, that we sounded a little bit like we were repeating the past, and I don't want to do that either. So I think we are open to, I'm open to a different approach to see if that works better, and if we got two in-depth audits out of it, I think that would be, with some follow-up, that could be just as valuable, so.
And we would, we would be more than happy when we send over the reports, to send over references as well. More than happy to send over superintendents to talk to, school board members to talk to, audit committee members to talk to. I think, you know, our work speaks for itself, and I'd be more than happy to provide those references.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you. My biggest question is around the remediation back in control side. We certainly want to do the audits and get good information, but how do we then act on that and get the value internally out of doing that? So if I'm looking at your list, I'm going to pick one, for example, that's intriguing to me, student discipline. So if we were to do an audit on that with you guys, what would that follow-up process look like at a high level? Recommendations, you then work with our safety and security team to see how that works, on how their reporting discipline? Do you come back every couple of weeks, couple of months to check in there? Do you have members of your team that help with that actual implementation process? Kind of, if you can walk me through that a little bit?
Okay. So you don't want your internal auditors implementing, right? So you don't want us implementing?
Sure.
That takes away from the independence.
Makes sense.
So all of our reports, the reports that you're going to receive, it's going to have an observation, it's going to have a recommendation, and it's going to have a management response. And management response is going to talk about how they are mediating that control. Usually it's in line with the recommendation that we provided. They're going to have the responsible party, and they're, they're going to have an estimated timeline. So we kind of look at that timeline to see, that helps us gauge, okay, when should we go back? Then if they give us a date of September, we need to make sure some time has passed that we can test the control. So let's say they give us a date of September, we'll typically have it in our spring, we'll have follow-up in our spring timeline to do follow-up to see how they're doing. Now, you know, we have found this with a lot of our school districts recently, just come, you know, just, again, the limited resources and the different hats that they wear, maybe some of those timelines shift. We were having this conversation with another board, actually just two weeks ago, about the follow-up and just some of the things still being open, and there are questions to management about making the remediation a priority. Because that's going to be up to management to, to make sure that they're implementing, they're remediating, and then for us to be able to come back and test. And keeping follow-up on the forefront, it keeps it in mind and makes sure that it doesn't get lost to the wayside. Does that answer your question?
It does. No, I appreciate that. Yeah. Last question really for Mr. Ward. I mean, do we need to go out to bid on this? Can we make a decision internally?
It's exempt in, in statute, and it's exempt in school board of education rules. So it's not required.
Do you guys ever go out to bid on things like this?
Some of our school districts, yes, some no.
Okay. If you had one that was, could be like a piggyback type thing, where you'd have other competitors that have gone against you? I've enjoyed this presentation. I think you guys could do a great job, but just be able to see what else is out there.
We have one that we just, Brevard County Schools just did this over the summer.
Okay.
Just, they, we just signed that contract two weeks ago.
Yeah, if you could share that one with us, then you'd wonderful.
They were existing.
We've been their internal auditors for 25 years, and they go out for bid every five years.
And how did we get them?
Talking with other finance officers that, that have contracted internal auditor. Honestly, although mainly with their finance officer.
As we look at this budget, when you do your risk assessment, do you come in with an idea? Because empirically, you've got to know how much time it's going to take based on those school districts. Because we're paying you by the hour, though, right?
It's by the hour, but we get a budget allocation, and we tell you what we can do for that budget allocation, pretty much. That's how, at the end of the day, that's how it works.
Wouldn't one audit take more time than another audit?
Yep, absolutely. So it depends on what comes up through our discussions and what the topics are. Then we're able to tell you, these are the topics, this is what we're seeing, this is what we can do for that budget allocation. Because again, you know, yes, you're totally correct, some, some projects are more in-depth or take more resource, et cetera, than something else.
Any other questions? Ladies, thank you. I appreciate it.
What's next, Ed?
The board has a conversation, gives superintendent direction on what they want to do, if they want to move forward with contracting it out, or if they want to go back and try to find another internal auditor, just give us direction.
I think if you can send us one of those sample ones you've completed in that Brevard bid, I think that'd help us a lot to get to the next level.
And we'll send you references as well.
What's the timeline you're looking for? What timeline?
We don't have an internal auditor now.
We're operating with that internal auditor, and, you know, we, we've got to get something going before we are in breach of the statute.
So it's going to be on y'all to get things to us very quickly?
Yes, so we send the reports, the sample reports to you, Scott?
Sure, sure, and I'll, I'll send it out.
Okay, yeah, we'll send that all that over this afternoon.
Okay. So could we be prepared to have a discussion item on our next Monday agenda to?
We can.
So we can keep the conversation going and?
We can add that.
Make something actionable, maybe?
Sure.
Necessary?
Board meeting? We're going to discuss it?
I don't know. Well, if you want to wait a month for another workshop, when's our next workshop?
I don't think we need another workshop on it. I think we can get the information and review it.
I think that.
Discuss it at a board meeting, yeah.
I think that if everything bears out.
Sure.
And that we have our individual meetings with the superintendent.
Yep.
Yes, I mean, I'd say we could look at the, the next board meeting, not this one Monday, but the following one in a couple of weeks should give us enough time to review information, have conversations, and so we want to.
If she gets the information to us, I think we could evaluate it her Monday.
Yeah. And if we're not ready Monday, then we just.
Then take it off. I'd say put it on the agenda.
Okay. I don't have an issue with that.
We'll do that.
Is that possible?
Yep, absolutely.
Good deal. Cool. All right, thank you all so much.
Claire, everything very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right. Next fun one up, 3.02, the five-year capital plan. Ms. Kelly Randall.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
Superintendent, how is everybody today?
Good.
All right. Feels like we just did this like a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
But it is that time to talk about the capital plan. So just a reminder of our timeline this year, for a change, we did a workshop on April 15th and had some preliminary discussion about the approach to it. We are to provide a final draft, hopefully that will be today, to our local governments by mid-August. And then, under the inter-local agreement for school concurrency, we adopt by September 15th. So hopefully, I think we're on track for that, and we can keep moving forward. Just a reminder, you, I know you know this, our revenue sources for the public are ad valorem, 1.5 mil. We use that interchangeably with local capital outlay and millage. So as I go through, if it switches back and forth, that's why. Impact fees obviously can only be used for new student stations associated with growth. And then our sales tax proceeds, which were voted in by the voters of Lake County, and began in January of 2018, and they did agree to those, use those for reconstruction of older schools. And just, we'll talk about it a little bit more as we go, but we are having to supplement that because of the, the cost increases that we've seen in construction. We are having to supplement that in order to get those projects moving forward with both ad valorem and impact fees where it's appropriate. So some of the challenges, they haven't really changed much since last year. We're still dealing with inflation, supply chain issues, and particularly honestly with labor shortages. That seems to be impacting all of our districts here in, in Florida, and probably nationally, honestly. We're also still dealing with long lead times on switchgear, chillers, windows. There's a myriad of items. We've seen a lot of kind of plateauing, but we haven't seen those incredible, you know, escalations and, and issues that we saw, you know, right after the pandemic. But, but we are still definitely seeing issues that we need to manage. And then just increased demands on our capital outlay millage. So things like the mandated share with the charter schools. There are some increases that are going back to the millage from, from the general fund, and we can talk about that a little bit more as we go. So that just kind of plays into that cash flow, making sure that we have the money to do what we want to do and have it in the right years. So those are some of the things. Of course, my goal's always to set a realistic revenue projections, doesn't do us any good to budget for more money than we're going to get. So we always try to do that, maintain our stable spending on annual expenditures, and actually, we're, we're increasing some of those a little bit as we go. Address those budget increases that we have seen for new projects. I will tell you, I had a, I opened up education slice this morning, and I saw that Putnam County is budgeting $62 million for an elementary school. That was a little bit of a shocker for me. So hopefully, hopefully, we're not seeing anything quite like that. I know Putnam County's a little bit different than us, not quite as many resources as we have, but $62 million for an elementary school is just, that's a lot. And then, you know, we, we keep a goal to keep everything kind of in the same year and just keep it moving forward in the, the capital plan. So our revenue, we have seen an increase in property tax revenue. I think a lot of that is due to the growth that we're seeing here in Lake County. So we're, we're keeping an eye on that. Projected impact fees revenue, we have it projected to increase to about $200 million over five years. So we've seen over the last couple of years fairly healthy impact fee collections, and so I felt confident enough at this point to go ahead and bump that up in the revenue projections. I will say, I will remind you every year, like I do, that that is highly subjected to, to the market forces, right? So if growth in Lake County slows down, if we stop building quite as many houses, our impact fees are going to go down. So our sales tax has been stable pretty much over the last, since we reinstituted in 2018. It's slowly growing, but I don't see any reason to, to see either really a drop or a major increase in that funding. It's also very market oriented, so, you know, fingers crossed we don't go into a, a major recession like we saw. Again, no real change in state funding, no, we don't receive any PICO, we haven't in, in many years. And we do receive some CO and DS money, capital outlay and debt service. That kind of slowly is growing as the state pays off those debts that it goes to, but we still receive less than $1 million a year that we can actually use in that money. And I'll, so the final revenue projected for this capital plan is over $800 million. And I will say, that sounds like a lot of money, but I will also tell you, back in 2007, our capital plan for five years was about $750 million, and we have only just gotten back to that level. So, you know, 15 years later, we are kind of back where we were pre-2007. And our, our costs have increased tremendously at the time. So that's the revenue projections page. Are there any questions about anything on that page? Okay. We are still, we are entering into new proportionate share mitigation agreements for the South County and the North County High School. We are still collecting some money for Leesburg area elementary, but because of all of the capacity projects that we're doing in that kind of Northwest County, we're not entering into new proportionate share mitigation agreements for that. All right. So ongoing expenditures in this plan, we have increased our required share with charter schools of our ad valorem. That is based on the actual amount that we were due to share with the charter schools. And so then, you know, we've increased that, and then we've added a, an increase factor on it as we go. So that is, right now, estimated at over $10 million over that five years. Per our discussion back in April about ending the capital renewal and increasing general maintenance funding, we've increased that maintenance funding to $13 million annually. The property, so, so property insurance transfer is a new line item. And it's not that we weren't doing that transfer in the past, we just weren't calling it out as what it is. However, there's been a, a real increase in our property insurance. And so I think for clarification point, rather than, you know, just keeping it under another line item, I think it's worth putting out that that is exactly what that is for. And then the capital staff transfer, again, that's a new line item, well, it's not really a new line item, but we're combining all of the staff who are eligible for, for that capital payment, and adding all of that into one eligible, or into one line item. I will say, Scott and Kim and I have had a lot of discussion about the transfers, and they have done a lot of work to identify the maximum possible transfer out of capital into the general fund. And so that's what we're budgeting for. Scott has promised me that he will not, if he doesn't have to, take all that money. But, you know, I think it's smarter to, to go ahead and budget for it and be prepared for that than, again, to have any, any kind of surprises at the end of the year. And then the portable installation line item, and I kind of have to explain how that works. So we added that line item, I believe, last year or the year before. But what I didn't account for at that time is that we pay for portable installations basically in spring, right? And so we were always kind of behind a little bit. So we need to catch up, we need to pay for this year's portable installations, and then we need to go ahead and prepare for next year's portable installations. And so for the first year, I've actually basically doubled that line item so that we can fix the cash flow issue that we're having with that. We were always having to pay ahead in order for next year. So basically, that's why that first line item is, is doubled. And then from then on, it drops down to, you know, $1 million, which is basically eight portables. And again, if we don't need them, we don't buy them, but we want to go ahead and budget for them. All right. Other ongoing expenditures, the portable lease transfer, again, that was one that they did a lot of work to identify what it, it could or should be, and so we've budgeted for that. The same thing with the capital school equipment transfer, that one, actually, we've been budgeting it at $800,000. It has a tendency to vary. Last year, it was $2 million something. And so, you know, in our discussions with finance, rather than try to have it vary, we just kind of made it consistent at 1.5 million across the, the board. Again, capital software transfer was increased to reflect actual costs. And then I changed the name of the safety and security line item to specify that it's IT-based safety and security. So basically, that's cameras, card access, all those kind of IT-based safety and security things that we do. All right. So that is our ongoing expenditures page.
The technology refresh transfer is different than the, I know you haven't gotten to that page yet.
Yes, technology refresh transfer is.
Technology upgrades, those are.
Yes. So those are two separate things. Technology refresh transfer is basically computers. So Chromebooks, staff computers.
The upgrades or anything upgrading, okay.
Yeah. And the upgrades, as we get there, those are basically infrastructure upgrades.
Okay.
So all the kind of built-in things. So you can think of technology refresh transfer as portable, right? And the technology upgrades as built-in permanent.
Cameras, lock systems, keyless entry, that kind of stuff.
So that would be under the IT-based safety and security.
Yep. Got it.
Couple different, couple different buckets.
Yeah, exactly. IT, you know, they manage that very well. So hopefully, they're always paying things out of the right bucket. All right. So new capacity, this is.
I'm sorry, could you go back? I have a question on that previous page. On the white fleet replacement?
Yes.
Is that on a rotation basis?
It is.
Or is it always this amount?
So, it has been this amount for quite a while, and we actually looked at that, I would say, maybe two years ago. We looked at, do we still need that amount? And the fact is, we still have quite a few outdated old vehicles that need to be replaced. I was behind one the other day. I almost took a picture of it because it was, you know, our number, first two numbers is the year, and it was like '07. It was like, and that's probably one of the newer ones. So, yeah, so there, I think there's going to be a need to keep that kind of at that level for a little while. The goal is to have it as a 10-year refresh, and that is mainly because it costs us less in operating dollars if we have slightly newer vehicles, right? Okay. Anything else on that page? No? All right. So, again, the fun stuff. All right. So, in the capital projects, new capacity, these are generally our impact fee funded projects. We have Minneola area relief K8 FF. That is, we are almost at topping out point in that, so it's kind of a midway point. And if anybody would like to go down and view it, it's certainly ready to, for a walk through, so just let us know. We're happy to have you have that time to do that. It also involves projects to build permanent capacity to replace portables. That includes the Villages Elementary School addition. And as we discussed in April, the Windy School, Windy Hill Middle School addition that was previously programmed, we have delayed, just kind of monitoring that situation. We do have a lot of middle school capacity here in the district, and so, we want to make sure that we're using that money wisely. And then, the big thing is, if everything keeps going well, I'm going to knock on wood, cross all my fingers, then we should have full funding for the high school in the Wellness Way area at the end of the year, at the end of the five-year plan. So, that is 28, 29. Again, as I've said, we're preparing for, you know, I hope it's less, I really do, but I am preparing for around $200 million for high school. And then, of course, we just need a high school site. So, that's my next big challenge. I'm going to earn that two gold medals from.
Or platinum. I think you're getting yourself, I really was so surprised when I opened this and I saw the South County High School in the five-year plan, because I never thought we'd see the day, knowing what it costs and knowing our commitment to pay as you go. This is great.
I have to say, I'm going to caveat that on a lot of things. But, you know, it's, to me, it's not really real until it rolls three, into the third year.
Right.
But, but it's kind of nice to see it there, right? Because there were times when I doubted that I'd ever see it as well.
I honestly thought we were still 10 years out, and so, this is, so, if it's fully funded in the 28, 29 year, would that open 2030?
So, really, it'd be fully funded kind of at the end of that year. And, you know, high school, we're probably in at least a two-year build cycle, maybe longer. So, you know, it could be 32.
32.
Yeah.
You got kids by the Mr. Doug.
I might be.
Two more kids.
Okay, well.
Now, it's 12.
All right. So, that is the big news.
I'm sorry, Coach.
Let me get some.
I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And the ongoing expenses, where have you put any refreshes on our high school football fields?
Keep going there.
Wrong way.
Where is it?
So, that is actually under the work plan. We're not there yet.
Oh, it's further down.
All right. So.
Right now, she's on.
Yeah. So, again, these are new capacity projects right now. This is the Minneola area relief. As you can see, we are, as of July 7th, they were, had parking lot, they had roof on most of it. Now, there's roofs on all of it. So, they are moving forward pretty well. I haven't seen any, any major issues there. The Villages Elementary of Lady Lake, we are expecting to come back with, to you with the GMP, which is basically kind of that last step that gives you the authorization to move forward with that in early September, and then looking for substantial completion in next summer, basically. And if you look at that picture, it is basically that building that sticks out there on the end, 12 classroom addition plus a playfield. And then, the other thing that we are doing there is significantly improving their circulation. And so, hopefully, we will get some of those cars off of, off of the road there. All right. Sales tax projects. So, Fruitland Park Elementary School, Beverly Shores renovation, Eustace Elementary, as we've discussed, that is delayed for the master planning process. We are in the final steps of selecting an architect and a construction manager. They should be, we shortlisted four architects and three construction managers, and they should be coming before you sometime, maybe the end of September, early October, so that you can select a firm to move forward with. The Eustace High School addition, basically, this plan moves them forward to design this year and construction funding next year. So, as soon as the plan is approved, we'll go ahead and publish that RFQ for both the architect and the CM there and get that moving. And then, the kind of outer year projects, the Oak Park Middle School, Leesburg Elementary K8 conversion is funded. Treadway Elementary rolled forward and is totally fully funded as of 28, 29. And then, Cypress Ridge moved forward and is partially funded.
Kelly, quick clarifying question there. On these sales tax projects, is there any component that we can use impact fees on from a capacity side with all these areas growing?
Yes. And so, that is actually, because our sales tax collections are really what, like 25 million a year, we are having to supplement those with both ad valorem and with impact fees.
But we can use impact fee dollars for the new capacity.
So, where we are, where we are extending, expanding our capacity at those, and we are adding additional seats, then I'm kind of using that, I'm using impact fee funding to help with that.
And that was particularly important because we had pledged to the voters that we were going to accomplish this list of projects, and we wanted to make sure we got through that list of projects.
Yes.
If I recall, was Cypress Ridge the last of those on that?
No. Umatilla Middle School is actually the last of them.
So, we'll get that one in there too?
So, Umatilla, yeah. I mean, actually, I think we're in fairly good shape to have everything accomplished before that sun sets in 2032. And, you know, as we discussed, I think in the next, oh gosh, what is it, like six years? I mean, we really need to be having the discussion of how we would use that, the next round of sales tax here in a little bit, and thinking about what that looks like. But, you know, I think it, it always sends a positive message if we've done what we said we would do with, with it during that 15-year period, right? All right. So, Fruitland Park Elementary School, also in good shape. They are moving forward, you know, walk it every, every couple of weeks, and it's just amazing the kind of the progress that they make. So, happy to see that. We are, again, planning for that January of 2025 opening. Beverly Shores, we are working through design on that. We're at 50% design. We have a little bit of time really on this one. It's kind of nice to have that luxury because, yeah. So, I picked this picture because I love the little flamingos.
It's so easy to theme that one.
It was adorable. So, yeah, so we are working through that and expect to come with you, to you with that GMP in, in early 2025. So, because we pushed off the opening of Fruitland Park, which kind of pushed off the opening of Beverly Shores, it has a little bit more time. It's kind of nice to have that little breathing space as we go through. All right. So, some other capital projects that are in that work plan session, and some of these are new. Go ahead.
Oh, I had a question still on this previous section, the modernization renovation. Okay, so Lincoln Park, I know that they were behind, and thanks to superintendent, I think she had made some calls to, I'll encourage some things, something rather with Duke Energy or with the Transformer, something you said. But anyway, when I was there, you know, it's hard to look like Lincoln Park yet because they're behind, you know? Says Claremont Elementary, Claremont Elementary rug, like, you know.
Yeah.
Can you, do you have any sort of updates on where they are and finishing this construction? Make it look like Lincoln Park?
So, they are, they are working very, very hard, I will say. If you go by there, you know, seven days a week, often past 5 o'clock, they are, they are out there working. They, so the goal is to, to open then, in that new section in, on September 3rd, which is the day after Labor Day. And we are moving through that. They are, let's see, some details. We are expecting to pave the parking lots and the bus loop on Monday, the 26th. Furniture will be delivered that same day, so that's going to be a fun day.
It'll be an exciting day.
Down there at Lincoln Park. And so, actually, I've got a coordination meeting at 2 o'clock to basically talk about how we're going to have those two, two functions going at the same time. You know, if you go through, it doesn't look like you see it from the outside, but basically, on the inside, carpets are in, casework is in, you know, everything's paved, everything's painted on the insides of those buildings. They look, you know, much better from the inside than they, they probably do from the outside. So.
They'll eventually paint the outside too, I.
Yes.
Okay.
They will paint the outside. We will not have that hodgepodge of lovely mural and brickton doorways.
All right.
So, yeah, so they are moving, you know, I have not seen anything lately. Again, fingers crossed. It's been a very interesting summer, but I haven't seen anything that would indicate to me that they're, we're not going to make that September 3rd date.
Okay. All right. Excellent news. Thank you.
Okay. Where were we at?
Other capital projects.
Other capital projects. Okay. So, some of these are either new or it's money that's been moved out of one area into another. So, the radio enhancement project that was, is being run by the IT department. Basically, it is upgrading all of our radios that, that schools use for communication. They can probably give you more technical details than I can. All I know is that they're funded at 3.85 million over two years. And basically, they have indicated that that should provide for that entire radio upgrade project. School intercom upgrade, they have been trying to fit in a couple of school upgrades. As you know, some of our intercoms are, they are, ancient's a kind word.
Hands with a string.
They are, they are out of date and beyond their life cycle. And, you know, and what we're finding is even with some of the newer ones, the size of them is limiting. So, you know, if we have a portable come in, then, you know, we don't necessarily have that capacity in that intercom system for some of the portables. So, IT has been working to upgrade our intercoms, and so, funding, we are providing funding of 2 million annually that provides for about maybe two to three intercoms, depending on the size of the school. So, yeah, they are, they're a fairly expensive thing, but I think it's, it is one of those things that is really important to the school. And the system that they're getting is, is really very flexible and, you know, seems to work well and is very, very well liked by the schools. Technology upgrades, that is the, the built-in infrastructure for technology in the schools and also classroom technology. So, one of the things that we have done here, the base level basically stays the same as what we have funded them at before, but for the first two years, IT is trying to complete the classroom technology upgrade. It got interrupted during the COVID years, and so, they have asked for additional funding for that, and I've added 5 million over the first two years for that. Basically, it's the rolling monitor, replacing the projectors, that classroom technology that I think you're pretty familiar with. Stover Field, we should close on Stover Field in the beginning of September. And, you know, part of the commitment was that we would do improvements up to a million dollars over five years. One of the first of those to hit is the concrete work to bring it up to ADA accessibility standards. And so, you know, that's what that first line item is. A lot of the others is basically will be funded through other sources. It's not like we're going to need to have a big, single line item for them every year. You know, Calvin's budget will handle, I'm sorry, Maintenance's budget will handle some concession stand upgrades, and we'll track all that so that we can basically say, yes, we've, you know, covered our, our million dollars over five years. But we did feel like, you know, there was enough of a need right now to go ahead and fund that additional line item. Our athletic facility projects, that is 500,000 per year over the five years, and I think we'll be working through to identify exactly where that goes as we, we do every year. I'm going to leave it up to Chad and, and Pat Todd. The same thing with the high school replacement, turf replacements. So, that has been funded at $250,000 a year. And so, you know, that is something that we identify on a priority basis as we go through. And then, if you remember when we were receiving the SRF funds, we had taken out, we had a elementary playground line item, that we were going to replace them all with the SRF funds, and so, we've added that line item back in since that's, that's not working so well.
How far did we get through there? Because we replaced some or a bunch?
We replaced quite a few, actually.
Yeah.
We have, we've done a lot. There's still some, and then, of course, playgrounds don't, they don't really last as long as you would hope they would, right? I mean, so, a lot of it is, at some point, we're going to end up even having to replace elements of, or some of those as we go.
Do you know if Taverys Elementary is on that list?
I do not know the specifics of it, but we can certainly look at that. I can talk to Gary's people and, and come back with you on, to you on that information. And then, covered walkways, we had made a lot of progress on replacing covered walkways, and there was a little bit of funding still in that pot, so I've left it in there so that we can continue. I think actually, well, don't quote me on it, but I don't think that there's a lot. I think there's a lot of kind of small pieces left, but I think most of the big projects are done.
That's, that's great, because I know that these are surprisingly expensive, based on what, the work that was done at Eastridge High School.
They are, yes.
So, that being said, I got to ask about Eastridge High School, because if we're talking six to eight years before we see another high school, and that school is already almost at 3,000 kids, dining spaces, I think they had a plan last year, year before to do some more covered outdoor space. Is that in here, or is that part of this, or has that already been committed to, or?
That is actually an excellent question. I don't really know about that. So, so.
I was there on Friday, and actually, that project, the covering with ceiling fans and all the electrical have been completed. She had all the furniture ordered, and they were just doing some final, I don't know if you know anything more about this, but I think she was looking at in the next week or two to have all of that finalized, but I think if you go out there, you'll see that it's.
That is amazing news.
Yeah.
Okay. Phew. So, I was like, I don't know where the funding is.
I would have the furniture she needed. She had, that was already sitting there waiting, and so, I.
Excellent.
Well done. Okay.
I'll verify that, but I think she.
Good shooting, Mr. Doug.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, the reason it wasn't in the capital plan is that was one of the SRF funded things. So, it was kind of a separate.
Food Service could cover some of that, right?
I don't think they did, but, yeah. We can certainly look at that.
Send them cash.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, then, land acquisition, still our priorities. We did close on the Wellness Way Elementary School site. That basically cost us $150,000 in cash, and the rest was impact fee credits. So, I'm kind of happy that that worked out. Still working on that high school site. We will, we will get on that. And then, as we see that kind of North Groveland, South Leesburg area develop out, you know, we track a lot of developments. They don't seem to be moving quite as fast as, as they were. So, but as we talked to those developers, we're, you know, looking at the opportunity for school sites in there. It's kind of the same situation as Wellness Way, where there's not a lot of infrastructure in there, and so, trying to find a specific discreet school site is, is difficult. But we keep working through that. And then, on, so that is basically the 25, 29 work plan over two pages. It has grown. But are there any specific questions on that?
I've got one. So, I attended an association building contractors meeting in Leesburg last week where the county economic development did a presentation and touched on Wellness Way a little bit and gave me some numbers on residential units, non-residential space. Do we know their plan for as they're going to start building in phases, like what comes first, where that's coming? I'm just trying to look at the impact fee dollars to get to that 207 million dollar number, because that is.
You know, I, I think.
It's 19,000 units.
Yes.
Clearly, all those aren't going to be built at the same time if they're ever all built.
So, we, we track them, but basically, when we see them is when they start coming in for the zoning.
Okay.
And I will say, you know, right now, so the Claremont portion of it has been growing very quickly.
Okay.
And, you know, that is, because the, the road network is there, is under construction, there's been lots of, you know, developer participation in getting that road network done. That has been. That has been, you know, moving fairly well. The county's portion, I think a lot of people are kind of waiting on, first of all, the extension of, you know, the county roads and how that works. And then also the, the connector from the 429 to 27. And so, you know, a lot of what we're seeing is just kind of a lot of land purchasing, people kind of positioning themselves, but not necessarily entering into actual development process.
Because in a perfect world, I'd love for all that non-residential to come first and get the ad lib arm dollars flowing in and not have all those kids that need seats at Eastridge High School and wherever else. Of course, it doesn't work that way for us all the time.
It does not, unfortunately.
As much of those impact fee dollars as we can use on that project, I mean, you take, what is it, 15,000 acres that used to be nothing and now we're going to build something. I think that's the definition of an impact fee. So as many dollars from those that we can use, I think would be great. Last thing I've got is just a comment. I get why we do the capital staff transfer as we do, but I, I would love to limit that as much as possible and be mindful of keeping those dollars in the general fund because we've got so many capital project needs that we just need to be mindful of. And as we keep doing this pay-as-you-go, which I think is incredible, every dollar matters. Being able to separate those out accordingly, I think is going to be a, a big thing, but you and your team continue to do a great job. So thank you, Kelly, for what you guys do.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Mathiast, do you have any questions for me? I know I did a good job.
You did outstanding.
All right. Thank you.
Good show, man.
Oh, you're done?
I mean.
Good morning. Does anybody need a break? No?
Okay. So moving right along, Ms. Obano, math, algebra.
Morning, Mr. Flowers. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members. I wanted to just start by saying thank you for providing us the time and opportunity to share a little bit about the journey that we've been on this past year as part of both the Algebra Task Force and the coordination and collaboration with Impact Florida and the Math Focus Cadre. So to start us off and share a little bit more about that work, Mr. Flowers is going to share an overview.
So a little background information, the whole process started with the establishment of the Algebra Task Force. And the purpose of the Algebra Task Force is to strengthen Tier One mathematics instruction through increased mathematics, our algebraic reasoning in grades two through 10 that will significantly impact Algebra One. Through our meetings and some intense conversations, our practitioners were able to determine a root cause for our algebra deficiency. And the task force was instrumental in working with the cadre to identify focus and fluency, our math focuses, focus around fluency. So one of my first actions after moving to Lake County was to contact Impact Florida to see if they had additional spots available for another district to be part of the mathematics cadre or the Math Focus Cadre. I'd begun this work in Osceola and they were thrilled that we had already established an Algebra Task Force and they wanted to help us out with our work by including us in membership for the Math Focus Cadre. So the primary outcome-based measure of the Focus Cadre is supporting our district team in development of a plan that will improve K8 math instruction, leading to increases in Algebra One success for all students over a five-year period. So we started our work and a major factor to developing our action plan was establishing a collective visions, vision for mathematics. So the vision set forth or put in motion our priority and focus as you'll see as we go through the plan. At this point, I kind of want to say, we're, we were recently informed that Impact Florida will be continuing the Math Focus Cadre partnership for the 24-25 school year. Their support and their staff expertise will ensure that our plan and our prototype models progress as intended and that they help us to look at our data that we're gathering and interpret it accurately. So diving into our plan, you see rediscovering joy in teaching mathematics. So if students are engaged and feel successful, they're more confident. And in their mathematical thinking, that's where the joy comes in. So we intend to do this through our focus on fluency and then our focus on mathematical thinking and reasoning skills. So communication is a huge part of any action plan and we are committed to communicating to all of our stakeholders. And we've developed a pitch for our mathematics action plan and Brett Fontenot, who is in the audience, is the voice of our message. So this is our why.
Too often, students enter math classrooms with minimal confidence and a sense of frustration. When joy is taken out of classrooms, learning diminishes. We're determined to rewrite this story. We know that 44% or 11 out of 25 students in third through eighth grade classrooms will not be proficient in math on the end-of-the-year state test. These gaps in mathematics skills in grades three through eight translate into 70% of ninth and 10th grade algebra students not being successful on the Algebra One EOC. This is concerning because Algebra One is the gateway to graduation and post-secondary opportunities. Imagine a classroom where students confidently explain their strategies, understand the approaches of their peers, and tackle problems with efficient strategies. That's the future we're working towards.
So that was our why and this is our what?
We will address this K through eight problem by strengthening foundational skills and developing a deep understanding of fluency with teachers and instructional leaders. We will empower students with essential skills, knowledge, and confidence through the application of mathematical thinking and reasoning.
So if that's our what, now we have a how we're going to do this.
Actions will include defining and communicating mathematical fluency, engaging in ongoing professional learning to increase fluency, using number talks, manipulatives, and mathematical thinking and reasoning activities, aligning strategies and activities to Lake County's high-quality instructional materials, and refining leadership practices through the use of an enhanced district walkthrough tool that guides feedback about fluency instruction. In the end, our students won't just solve math problems, they'll thrive in any mathematical situation, equipped with the confidence and skills to excel.
So that's our pitch for our action plan. Another communication tool is text. And I provided for you a one pager of our Focus on Fluency Plan. And that kind of takes us to our prototype timeline. So the prototype focuses on grades two, four, and eighth grade pre-algebra. We recruited a school or feeder pattern in each region and those participants are Leesburg Elementary, Oak Park Middle, Lake Point Academy, Sorrento Elementary School, and then Mount Dora Middle. The prototype expansion, as we get to 25-26, will add an additional school or feeder pattern per region and then expanding grades and schools represented in the membership of the Algebra Task Force since they've got some, some stake in this part. So to prepare for our prototype model and adhere to our timeline, these are the actions that we took place, that took place over the summer and were accomplished. Our prototype participants did individual, or prototype principals did individual kickoff presentations with their staffs during pre-planning. So we are now officially underway. So back to Ms. Obando.
We're missing a slide here. That's okay. So as we get ready to roll up our sleeves and take action finally, it's, it's been a road to get to this point. A lot of thoughtful deliberative, deliberate reflection on where we are, but this process really challenges us to focus on the systemic change that's scalable over time. So we want to take action right now. We wanted to, day one last year when we started looking at the data and really digging in and identifying fluency as this focus. But this is a different way of, of work for us in the sense that we've been so deliberate and strategic in doing this work over time, starting small with something that is scalable over, over five years. Another piece that is different within this work is our focus on the five conditions that support great teaching. And we know that one of the most important things that Mr. Flowers shared was the development of that shared vision for math instruction in Lake County schools. I think that was a key collaborative effort. We have members of the Focus Cadre team here today to support this work. And that truly was an opportunity for us to engage with many stakeholders and identify what is it that we're after? What do we want in math instruction in Lake County schools? Now that we have a shared vision, that is serving as our anchor to guide the work and to guide our next steps. We are also extremely focused and intentional within this work on ensuring that we, that all of our teachers and students have access to high-quality instructional materials, that we are intentional and strategic about that professional learning and we are providing them with the support that they need, that we have empowered leaders. Mr. Flowers talked about really preparing our leaders at the prototype schools this summer to be able to kick off this work at their school sites. And we're very intentional about collaborating with them along the way throughout the year. And that last piece is the effective use of data. So we've embedded strategic opportunities to reflect along the way on where we are in this work. Are we seeing results? Are they meeting our success criteria that we've identified for every step along the way? And if not, we'll be able to make adjustments within the scope of something that is a little smaller so that we can hopefully correct any missteps along the way as we expand the prototype over the course of the next few years. There it is. I think I was going backwards. That's all. All right. And this last piece, I mentioned that as we went through this process, we really started with the end in mind. We started with discovering where we were as a district in math instruction in Lake and that was challenging for the members of the Focus Cadre for sure. We had to sit in the discomfort of some of the data and, in order to determine what we needed to focus on as a district in math to support our students. And we had to envision, what was that going to look like to find joy in math classrooms and to enable every student to have success within their math instruction? We also were very intentional about the strategic plan that we've developed to take us across these next five years and support the work. And, and we prepared this summer. There, I know Mr. Flowers shared the action steps and the work that occurred over the summer. There were a lot of collaborative work that went into that process. We're very thankful for the Algebra Task Force members who also were instrumental in giving us feedback. We have many teachers on the task force and they took a look at this plan. They said, here's where we can do it better, here's where we can strengthen this, and here is, is what's working. So we're excited that we've reached the preparation phase and now we're actually ready to, to launch. And it is our hope that at the end of this journey, we will not just have a shared vision in Lake, but we will be able to turn that shared vision into a reality for our students. Questions for us?
Any questions? Ms. Luke?
No. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to.
I do have some questions. I was really, I was really hoping for your expertise as the, the math person here.
I've been involved along the way, so I have a little bit.
I see. Yeah. So just as I'm, as I'm trying to get an essence of all this, now that this is grounded in this, this, this five graphic here, this, this five conditions, I'm not sure how that's, how that's different than what we're, what we're already doing. I mean, don't we already promote the shared vision and try to put high-quality instructional materials, effective professional learning, empower leaders and got it for, like, I, I feel like that already exists. Why is that a, a novelty for this?
We do. And I, and I don't think it's necessarily a novelty. I think it's been the strategic checkpoints that we've built in along the way of this plan. Like everything, and, and Mr. Flowers has the binder of our action plan and every step along the way is rooted in, okay, how are we reflecting on professional learning? We have that bucketed as an item. Here are the professional learning supports that are going to be in place. Here's how we're going to check and measure the effectiveness of this professional learning. Same thing with instructional materials. So yes, I think one of, I think that's probably why this work resonated with us so much as a team because it is something that, that we do within our, within our district. But I think the intentionality of being strategic along the way and knowing here are the way, here are the steps that we can take and here's how we're going to measure that work is something that we were a little bit maybe slower and more reserved in the approach. And that was difficult for us as a, as a committee because we wanted to really like get to work right away.
Yeah. And I mean, certainly I recognize the value of, of a strong base, right? If you can, if they're not behind when they leave the early primary grades and statistically, they should, you know, not be behind later, I would think. And so I see a lot of attention on the, on those, you know, the foundation, which I, I certainly appreciate, you know, building that number sense and that fluency, I think is, is really important. My wondering though is, what are we, what are we doing for the folks who have missed that window now when they are later in middle school or they're in high school and we've got 30% of our high school students proving proficient on a graduation requirement? You know, I, I had a parent call me a couple of weeks before graduation, just in absolute tears because her kid kept coming one point away from meeting the graduation requirement on any sort of concordant test and thought, how in this world is, how in the world is this kid not going to graduate? And so, you know, what, what is there for a kid like, like him?
Yeah. I don't know if you want to speak a little bit to the Algebra Task Force too?
Some of the things that the Algebra Task Force came up with were, they need community to help fill in the gaps as well. So what we've done is we've, we've scheduled time for them to meet and work together to help those students because there's power in numbers. You know that, that the smartest person in the room is the room. And so our algebra teachers are meeting together to better understand their kids. They're, they're a larger professional learning community is really what they are. So they can better support some of the gaps as students are getting to them from pre-algebra.
May I interject a little bit as well? So the other thing I wanted to share with you is that I think if you think about the district's guided, like, lessons and how we have our, whatever, I can't remember the name of it right now, but, you know, shared vision and instructional looks like and all things. This was more, in my opinion, this was more focused on mathematics. And so when we were doing some of the observations, some of the things that we're seeing in math and, and not that it's more challenging to teach, but I certainly think there's less people that love math and that want to teach it.
Yeah.
Some people that are great at math aren't good teachers, right? So I might understand it myself, but then how do I convey that to people? So there's a lot of conversation that was specific to mathematics. So that is a little bit different than the global district vision. How do we assess that? How do we work together? And even having those Algebra One teachers in the room talk about, how are we seeing success? Where are we filling in gaps? And some of the things that they've identified, like the thinking mathematic, or the, the number talks and the collaborative classroom, there's some things that they're putting in place now that are different approaches to teaching mathematics that I think we've been saying for a long time. Like we've been saying, these are the best practices in mathematics. But now to have an eye on that and the monitoring that's going into it and being able to have discussion about what's working and what's not. So some of those gaps will hopefully, I think intentionally, be filled in as the work progresses. And I, I, what resonated with me was whenever you guys mentioned that, I want it all in. Like I want them all to have it. Like I want every single school in this district to be this focused, but the reality is to do it well and to see what's working and what we need to tweak, I think makes more sense because if we go to the schools and say, this is our vision for everybody, but then how do we monitor that vision that big and how do we grow it and make changes as it progresses? And so, I don't know. It's, it's hard.
To build on that as well, we're going to be looking at creating a bank of videos from our Algebra Task Force people and others who were identifying as exemplary classrooms to show what works, to go deeper with that, that understanding of, of what great instruction looks like.
Yeah. You know, one of the things I'd written down just as a wondering was the teacher as an entertainer. And I think that you just kind of maybe captured that in a, in a respect when you talk about people being good at math, but maybe not good at teaching it or, you know, the engagement makes a huge difference, right? And what is the climate of that, that classroom and, you know, what is the, the persona that comes forth? You know, I, I struggled a bit in Algebra II as a, as a high school student and didn't, I, I think I struggled in a lot of math classes. And then suddenly I get to calculus and now I'm like, I, I'm in the room with a teacher who, you know, just really makes math fun. And that was where suddenly I, I had my, my math takeoff. But, you know, it shouldn't have, shouldn't have. But, you know, it shouldn't have, shouldn't have waited till calculus, but like, that was the moment, and it was, it was the teacher who makes the difference, right? And so I'm just wondering, on this professional learning side, is, you know, how do we capture that idea of just making the subject matter fun? You know, because not, not everybody, not everybody loves math, right?
Right. Rediscovering the joy, right? To that, that, that slide, rediscovering the joy. But I think also, it's, it's about building upon the strengths that we do have, that do exist within this district. We have teachers who are sitting on the Algebra Task Force who have success, who have students who walk away every year, year after year, loving mathematics, increasing their love for math after being fortunate enough to be in their classrooms. So how do we systemically build that structure to allow that to be replicated across all of our classrooms in the district? I think that's the goal, probably easier said, said than done, right? But I think having these collaborative conversations and getting these teachers to the table alongside our program specialists, alongside our regional executive directors, alongside Lake Sumter State, I think those conversations have really helped us to kind of reshape what we're looking for in the end, and then how we're going to get there along the way.
And, you know, the last, last question I'll just inquire about is the high-quality instructional materials. I think for so long, I've, and I've had a number of kids now who have gone through algebra or math, where I've discovered, like, Alex would replace the textbook. Alex became the textbook, and we have a, we have a textbook. Why are they not using the textbook? Is it because the textbook is bad, or because, you know, I, I don't know, but, you know, I've seen so many textbooks come home at the end of a year, and I go, this is just, it's heartbreaking to just toss these in the recycling bin because they're not used. Why? Have we gotten to the bottom of that?
I, I think that's a little bit different, in different places, as far as the why, but I think a lot of it comes down to what can we do to ensure that our message is loud and clear, that we have gone through this work of acquiring high-quality instructional materials for our teachers and for our students in the classroom? So how do we best provide the support? First, the clarity around, these are our core instructional materials, but then also the support to ensure that teachers have what they need within those materials, to feel like they can adequately address each student's needs. I think sometimes, some of the, the use of a supplemental program comes down to, well, I'm not sure that it, that's meeting the need for every student. So how do we continue to provide that professional learning and support to ensure that, that, number one, there's open communication and conversation around what the materials have available for students, but also that teachers feel, teachers feel supported in that work? So I, I think that that's probably one of the benefits of our work here, is honestly, this professional learning is all rooted in the core instructional materials. So within our prototype schools, for sure, there's such a focus on, okay, here's how we're doing this, but here's how we're doing it in alignment with the core, in alignment with the core materials that we're using. And of course, we follow that same approach when our program specialists and regional team members provide professional learning in math, regardless of whether they're in the prototype or not. But I do think we've, we've seen a shift to, to actually see a much higher use of the core instructional materials in mathematics since the math adoption.
Well, I'm excited, because my past experience has taught me that when you truly understand, and there's a common vision, and you have a select group that you train, that can go out and train others, that you can turn things around. I look at algebra as like a big cruise ship, and we're set in a way that we need to turn, but we can't just, you know, it takes a while. If you've been on a cruise, you know it takes a while to get that ship turned and headed in another direction. And I see this plan as our first steps toward turning that cruise ship. I am extremely excited to hear this. This is something that has concerned me for a while, and I like the idea that we have the experts, the people who do this on a daily basis, they're going to be looking at it, and they're going to be coming up with best practices, and then they're going to be sharing those with the other people who are going to do it. So I am very happy with your work, and I really am excited about what it can produce for our students here in Lake County, and I'm looking forward to seeing how our test results improve as a result of this work. So thank you, we appreciate you, and we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Board member comments? Mr. Mathias? Mr. Dodd? Ms. Luke?
I'm good.
Mr. Brandyberg?
I'm good.
Well, Madam Superintendent, do you have any comments?
I do not, I'm good.
And our attorney's not here, so I guess if there's nothing further, our meeting will be adjourned.